And that's by working together and that's TD, senators, councillors. We're not doing anybody any favors, by not. And look, we all know, we all have neighbours, family members, friends. But even within the council, or the councillors, council staff, everybody has MICA in their homes. And there's nobody, it's like cancer, it's like cancer, it's just affecting the whole community. And we need to have solidarity, but we need to work. We can have differences of opinion, but we need to work together. And that's quite clearly coming out of the meeting today. And certainly, there's a lot of calls for inquiries. And I would 100% agree, we need to have inquiry. But no inquiry should get in the way of progress, in the way of trying to get these houses sorted out. Because the next thing you're going to hear is builders and different people, inquiry owners, all looking for legal representations of inquiries and this and that. And we need first and foremost to get the scheme amended. The original scheme, while it was set up with good intentions, we had to accept that. And we all thought it was going to be great. But it was only when that scheme was implemented, when engineers were on the ground, when the proof was put in the pudding to see how it would work. We've seen that there's more, there's more problems now than anybody envisaged. And the cost, the cost is not what was envisaged, it's not a token, it's not a token sort of payment by house owners. It's just totally unaffordable and it's totally unfair as well. It has to be parity of esteem with the pay rate. And I think that, and I certainly, and I call on my party representatives here in Donegal and the Dáil, I'm no quid at all about calling them to support this 100%. And I know they have already done so, I know all of the councillors, all parties here have. And I think that's, that's very, very important. And I must commend again the MICA group, the MICA committee led by Martin, all of the people that are out there, and even people that don't agree that this is maybe the right way, or people that at the moment lack confidence, and that's to be expected. Like, you know, we haven't seen the end of this yet, you know, we're only at the beginning. So it's only a natural enough, a lot of people are sceptical, a lot of people are pointing a finger. And there's a lot of anger and that out there, but that should not get in the way of progress. Let's get the progress, then the blame game can start. One question I would have, and it's got up time again, and I was alluded to by other members, but I would like for it to be explained to us in clear terms, what assurance there is, or how we know that the MICA and other substance pay rate etcetera in East Block, how can we be 100% sure today that that's not the case? Who's actually, who did test the blocks, as someone alluded to earlier? Who's actually testing houses done on a regular basis? How do we know? And that's something we need to be, people that are building houses right now are trying to get mortgages. So as I say, I support everyone who's spoken so far regarding inquiries, amending the scheme. And I alluded as the last day, as I watched the meeting, I was at the March in Dublin, I've listened to many of the meetings by these committees and others. And I must say, I would support 100% what's there. And we need to get, we need to get a scheme that's fit for purpose, and we need it as soon as possible. So thank you very much.
Welcome to the board, Councillor Brian McGinnis.
Chairman, thank you, and thank you for dialing over this meeting. It's your first meeting, and rightly so. Dating was the most important issue in Donegal County in my time. And I've been a long time in Donegal County Council. I welcome, and I want to welcome the public here today. Quite, I've no doubt that quite a number of the public will have affected by MICA. I built an extension to my premises here, and there's MICA in that. I don't think there are very many, any family in Enniskillen that isn't affected by MICA in some way or another. So I welcome the public here today as well, and thank you, Chairman, for arranging that. First of all, I want to concur with my own party whip, Martin Harley, as what he stated, he made behalf of the party. That's where the party stands, 100% redress. I want also to state clearly that I had full and have full confidence in Martin McDermott, the chairman of the Members' MICA Committee. I don't think it is fair, or is it fair, that anybody would cast any aspersions on Martin and his work. Martin has been very diligent, has done tremendous work with the committee. He's been available to all people at all times. And I know, I know he's my neighbour here, but I know, and nobody knows him better than me, and knows the commitment that Martin has to the MICA problem, and he is a public representative. I want also, Chair, to acknowledge the MICA Committee, MICA Action Committee. It's had 10 years since I attended the first meeting, just around 10 years of the MICA Action Group. Very first meeting that was held, I was present. And I saw what has happened in the work that has been done by so many people, and especially that MICA Action Group, who have given of their time, have had raised awareness, have had public meetings, in the Greenin and elsewhere, and down through the years. And they worked, you know, with tremendous dedication to their fellow man. They, we had, through that group, and Joe McHugh delivered a redress, 90%, 90% redress scheme. It didn't work out that way, and Joe would be the first to tell you. The civil service in Dublin opposed it right, left and centre, and the MICA Action Group knows that. But eventually, they signed off on it at 90%. We're looking for another 10%, another 10% or. And we're having difficulty getting another 10%. Because that 90% didn't work out at all because of civil service interventions. And I want to say that our officials in the MICA, and in Donegal, our officials in the council, Patsy Lafferty and John Guller have done tremendous work in dealing with that civil service. And they're totally persuaded with that civil service. I have brought cases to them, and I brought it up at Meetings, Chair, as you know, on humanitarian grounds. And this was brought forward to the civil service by Patsy and John, and rejected it. There was a question down, but Joe McHugh put a question down in the Dalles yesterday in relation to it. And the minister assured him that they would be now looking into that. But it's, the civil service is opposing everything, putting obstacles in our way, even to the detriment of their elected peers. Of all parties, find it difficult to get around them. And we have to find some way and means of bringing that to an end. But as far as our committee here, Chair, is concerned, we have to remain united. 100% redress, nothing less. We have to remain united without calling or questioning any of our photos of anybody. Because it's very, very unfair. And I support, and I've always supported, a public inquiry. But I would ask those who are on social media, if, and we are supporting and calling for a public inquiry, then let them refrain from naming people and finding people guilty before a public inquiry has taken place. And they're doing nothing for their cause, they're doing nothing for the MICA Action Group's cause, they're doing nothing for the people who are most needs cause. Anybody can name anybody, anybody can pick weaknesses or anything, but that's not the way forward. We have to keep one thing in mind, 100% MICA redress, nothing else. Your 90% didn't work, and the civil servants and the government should be told that. Now you give us another 10%. I just think that since some of our officials have been named, this is very, very unfair. Why have they been named? They've been accused of negligence, they've been accused of different things, without any evidence at all to support that. And I would, I had to say to those who are using social media, remember that every man and woman working for Donegal County Council have a family, and some have children. Is that the way to treat your labour? I don't think it is. I agree with practically everything that was spoken here today, Chairman. But I want to say one thing, we have a housing crisis. And we need a plan going forward for private house owners and for council tenants. And it's now we put that plan in place. I've talked before, months ago, about pending housing crisis in Donegal. And, you know, we have got alongside our campaign for 100% redress, we have got the Ruin House in order and provide for the people of our county, who have gone through hell on earth, so we don't fall of their own. And, you know, there is absolutely no doubt in my mind that if there's a public inquiry, that will bring out who's at fault. But everybody is actually at fault, including the banks, insurers, everyone. I just can't, anybody involved in giving loans or anything else to properties, and then asking people to pay a mortgage on a property that's worthless, it just beggars belief. So I believe every member of Donegal County Council, every member of Donegal County Council, has hearts in the right place, they want to do the right thing for the people they represent. They want, and I believe every council official is the same, because many of our council officials have MICA in their own homes. They want to get this 100% redress scheme over the line. And then you ask yourself the question, who is blocking it? So I have, I want to commend the March to Dublin, I wasn't able to go on it. But they've done the county absolute great credit, no matter in which they behave themselves, no matter in which they went down there, got their case to the capital. But, and we had many, many members of the RAC to supporting them. But, but whereas it blocked, the credit presently is going down. And they will tell you, it's like getting our teeth paces that slow. This shouldn't be, the civil service shouldn't be holding things back or dragging our feet. It shouldn't take a question down in the Dalles, we get a minister to commit, looking after some of our families on humanitarian grounds. We're looking for money, it just want to be dealt with within the system. It exists here, and they're opposing that. What Canning talked about, planning, it's absolutely crazy, and we all know it's crazy. But you have to apply for planning permission, replace a house on the same footprint. If you were taking it two or three fields away, different question. These are civil servant decisions, and they don't need to change. We need to change the existing scheme to 100%. And that's all, as what I will be, have supported and will support as long as I'm in Donegal County Council. Again, I congratulate you, Chair, on the first meeting. It's very correct that it's about the biggest crisis and disaster that has happened in the county, and especially here in Enniskillen. And I commend you for that. And I want to again to say that I'm fully supportive of Martin McDermott as chairman of our committee on the council. And I believe that maybe way forward, we need now, while the MICA Action Group is meeting with the minister and things, we should be also, or meeting with the civil service, we should be also meeting with our representatives in the county, for their field, as council representatives, as elect representatives of the people of Donegal, I think, Chair. And that's not interfering in any way with the MICA group, that's presently trying to negotiate something. And I find it very, very difficult. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Councillor McGinnis, and I have Councillor Liam Blaney.
Thanks, Chair. First of all, Chair, I'd just like to say that I just wouldn't be fully convinced that this meeting should have went ahead today. We already had a meeting a few weeks ago dedicated to the MICA issue. And I think that the majority of councillors on Donegal County Council spoke that day, raised a huge amount of issues. As well as that, we have a working group set up, negotiating with the department until the 31st of July. And I think we should be allowed to go until last decade before any other meetings would be seen to be interfering. And hopefully it won't be seen to be interfering with them. But, and hopefully the message will come out from this meeting here today, that the reason that this meeting was held is because it's to help and support them on their fate, with the department to ensure that every homeowner in this county gets 100% redress. It shouldn't cost them one cent, take their house back to where it should be. And for that reason, I just, I'm not fully convinced, Chair, that we should have went ahead with this meeting until the 31st of July. And it is unfortunate as well that we have a number of groups representing the homeowners. I believe we should be all fighting this together, and as I always say, goals, divide and conquer. And I believe we should be all one. And I think it is unfortunate that it has divided up into other groups out this day, and maybe may have divided up more, hopefully not, but I believe they do as well. I'm not going to go over everything that I went over the last day. There was a lot of issues raised the last day with everybody. A lot of people aren't going over all them issues again today. But I just want to say that I fully support the call for a public inquiry as well. I want a full conference on the chair of our redress scheme and Donegal County Council, of Martin McDermott. I've worked closely with Martin since that committee was set up. And he has put 100% of his effort into that, and time into that chair of that committee, the better of the people that has a problem of making the homes. And I don't think there's any other agenda other than that held by Martin. There's a lot of allegations being made, and you endows them, both here today and on social media, unsubstantiated allegations, I have to say. And it's easy for people to go out and say populist, throw out populist phrases. And unfortunately, a lot of it sticks. And I would ask anybody that has got any information, that they'll take it forward to the proper, the proper places, either to the Gardaí, or I'd be very interested to hear it myself. Anybody that has any proof of allegations that are being made. Unfortunately, in my mind, there's no proof shown yet. It's all hearsay, a lot of it's hearsay anyway. And I'd be very, very interested in seeing any proof that people are supposed to have to any of these allegations that has been thrown out there. I'd like to say as well that I would have full confidence on the council staff as a minister in the scheme. This can't be, this can't be that easy for them either, things that's been said about them. But I do believe that the engineers is going to have to take a bigger, better responsibility than what some are taking. They've given information back to homeowners, that is not maybe 100% true. For each of the options that they propose for any individual, any individual home, they know the criteria that they're supposed to meet, for them to be able to recommend that option. And it's not the fault of the staff of Donegal County Council, that they don't send in all the criteria that's required of them. And as well as that, I would like to hear the information from the engineers out there who are saying that they are sending in all the proper criteria, but they're still not getting, getting their applicants, application to be processed. And as well, I'd like to say that a number of weeks ago, we had the MICA redress committee of Donegal County Council, we had a number of meetings there in this last number of weeks. And I would say it is our job to ensure that the scheme is administered properly, as councillors. And in my opinion, on the first meeting we had, it was taken about 10 to 12 weeks to process an application. And there were reasons, valid reasons given for that at the time. But within a couple of weeks, that was reduced to three to four weeks. And I think we have to die as the work done by the staff again on ensuring that happened. And I do hope that continues to happen, and we will keep an eye on it to make sure, as far as we're concerned, that the council keeps up their end of the bargain. And it's only fair to the homeowners that they would keep up their end of the bargain. As far as the council's own council houses concerned, I don't believe that we are giving enough information back to the tenants of our houses. There's huge problems with tenants seeing their house deteriorating. We know where there's different places has been suggested that they would hold back the rent because of the condition the houses are getting into. And I think it's too slow, and it's possibly not Donegal County Council's fault, but I think it's too slow at pace that any work is ongoing or happening with these houses. It is far, far too slow, and I think it has to be speeded up very, very quickly. Because it will be a long, long time getting through them at the rate things are going at the minute. I think that's one of the things that the council is going to have to take on board and try and improve, the rate at which any work is going on as far as the county council, the council house is concerned. At last, Chair, I'd just like to say, there's a question I would have of the executive as far as the legal advice is concerned, that we got a number of weeks ago, and asked if we'd get a second opinion on it. And everyone wrote back something about it, and I'm just wondering if somebody gave me some kind of update on here today. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Liam. Just to, Councillor Michael Collins, we could send my apologies here to leave early. Councillor Barrett Cembrogan is indicated too, so I'm going to take him after Councillor Michael McBride. So the next figure I have on my list is Corlir Terry Crossan.
Good morning. I'm here now, but while I'm, we have more of our schedules and can you show how can you? I guess why I'm glad is to watch the chair and do I go to you and can you? Over my, into my agenda, but so. I want to thank the Chair for calling this meeting, and I want to commend him on the manner in which he has conducted this meeting. I fully support the positive input from all of our members. We need full council unity on this very serious issue. I support the MICA group, who are now in negotiation with the government. I support the MICA families, I support 100% redress, and I support the call for a public inquiry. As a member of the MICA subcommittee, I did not have sight of the letter allocated by Councillor McBride. I accept fully Councillor McDermott's explanation, and I know that Councillor McDermott is a person of integrity, who has worked extremely hard for the MICA families. I would call for himself and Councillor Albert Doherty to be included in the working group and to be a part of the ongoing negotiations. I would also call for a representative from social housing to also be included in that group. I would like to commend the council officials who have an extremely hard job here and in the role. There have been many problems, and they have endeavoured to do the best they can. There are incredibly questions that have to be asked and questions that have to be answered. And I would welcome that. So, the session here, I'm sorry. Good morning, I'm here, I guess, me and your, I'm here, I'm more.
Good morning, sir. Next up is Councillor John Amish O'Farrell.
Good morning to you, uh, hello, I'm Paul, can you show a target, I guess, um, in Kwaada Shatene, Marx, uh, I guess, uh, I'm calling McDermott here, can you show? I guess I'm sorry, I'm popular, I'm showing you, I guess, I'm showing, uh, kids, uh, for a great, I'm popular, what do the guys, I can't, I'm a holder, I guess, I'm showing you. When, when the kids from gate, read, I should, I should, I should, uh, get out this, uh, danger, I should, I should, you danger, which I didn't, I'm a visa.
Want to see one thing get mixed up with the other. We have to deal with the present crisis because that is what is affecting the people mostly now. For immediate, I would like to clarify that.
All right, Councillor Paul, as far as I've left now, Noel Jordan, then earlier I said that we need Donaghy in after Noel, Michael McBride, Gerry Crawford, Michael McMahan, and I said it would be Kieran Brogan. Then me, how Colin, we got last week and then Frank, I'll let you in briefly again, the answer, you know, a bit of time as a sergeant, so just briefly, was anything that you want to come in there? But that's the speakers now as I have it, folks. So, Councillor Jordan.
Thanks, Chair. And again, I would just like other speakers, I would like to commend you for accommodating this meeting today. And I think, you know, there's from a couple of previous speakers talking about the previous meeting. This meeting is different because the public are invited onto this forum today. The public that are affected by this crisis and there's members here from the MICA action group as well. And it shows that there is elected members throughout the county that they are unanimously agree that there should be a hundred percent redress scheme for these people and the crisis that they're in. And also to call for a public inquiry, there's a public inquiry, to me, in my eyes, won't affect what is already in place or is what has already been negotiated for. Because people needs to know the truth, they need to know the truth behind a lot of the questions has been asked today. There's a huge number of speakers that have brought up points that I would like to raise. I think there's one, one very important one, which, as you know, that I'm an elected rep from South of the County. And as for now, we're not aware of any houses that's affected by MICA in South of the County. Well, in the last number of weeks, I've been contacted by a number of householders that are getting engineers reports done. And they're just that they fear that they may have MICA. So the scope has widened. And for these people, for these people, the whole, the supposed, the whole part of investigative, part of MICA here, they don't know where to go to, they're asking questions. It's new to them, it's new to them. And I suppose, and I would be asking that there is a liaison officer set up by the Donegal County Council to deal with all these queries from these concerned householders affected by this crisis. And for private householders and council tenants that are in properties that are affected by the crisis. And the people, and people who receive home assistance payments, that they're in a huge difficulty too. Trying to deal with landlords, the landlords are locked out of this scheme by lots of things. And there's a huge amount of questions to be asked. I would just like to ask how many houses in our council stock that we're aware that are affected by MICA? How many have been applied for this scheme? And I also would like to commend Councillor Gary Doherty for adding the, will add the disposal of the affected materials to the agenda of the Environment SPC. Because that's going to be a huge difficulty down the road too. There's questions to be asked, you know, if it has to be disposed of and can't be used again. And maybe if it can be used again for other purposes, for other purposes, maybe walkways, trailways. We don't know, we don't know any of these, none of these questions have been answered. So there's a lot of questions out there. And I would also like to commend Councillor McDermott and Councillor Albert Doherty for their works so far on the MICA committee. And now, I would be asking for Councillor McDermott and Councillor Doherty to be included on the working group that are negotiating with the department. Because I feel as a councillor that was elected in 2014, I wasn't aware of MICA at all. And the councillor Albert Doherty had raised, he must have had a bit of motions in my time in council on MICA. So I wasn't aware of it until I was elected in 2014. So this is going to be a huge, it's going to be, it has been the biggest crisis ever the county has faced. And it will take an amount of time to, to suppose, to address it. But it's clear that there's only one way addressing that, as a hundred percent redress scheme. And I think there's been a lot of huge attacks on the council. And it's been, I think the department's been left off the hook here quite clearly. There's mixed messages coming back and that's concerning for people. That's, and it's, you know, I would feel that we're getting away from probably, suppose, the nuts and bolts of this. But clearly from today's meeting, I think it's very, very important that everybody's involved in this today. And again, just to voice my support to, for a hundred percent redress scheme. Thanks, Chair.
My good, Councillor Jordan, I said earlier at this point, I would let Councillor Reena Donaghy in, so Reena, are you there?
Yeah, Goro Maihaga, thank you very much. As you know, back at the plenary meeting on the 26th of May, towards the seriousness of the MICA issue. As Chair, I put a whole sixty-four items on the agenda to allow a full day's discussion on MICA in Donegal. And I was delighted to leave the meeting that day, knowing that all of the members who attended the meeting were four square united behind the homeowners affected by MICA, to ensure we accept and seek nothing less than one hundred percent redress. And all of the issues that were engaged and for the past year, Covid and others. The most serious is the one blighting the lives of thousands of families here in the county. My own town, Bonkranagh, has seventy-five percent of uninsured MICA, that's social and private. So it's an issue that's causing on-toll stress for families. So nothing less than one hundred scheme will give families the justice that they deserve. And it's important that we iterate that message here today. And I said last week, at the meeting last week, that the MICA epidemic must consume all of our political energies over the next months ahead. We have twenty-five thousand vacant houses in Donegal. I don't know if people are aware of this or not. But I would like to see a scheme that would allow these houses be brought to a livable state where they could be used by people that have to come out of their MICA homes until their own home would be fixed or rebuilt. And I know this is a national issue, but it's something that we seriously need to look at. And a central recycling area for the county, where all of the material from the MICA homes could be recycled safely. So I think that's something that would be very important as well for the county. It's very disappointing to see insurance companies and banks walk away into the sunset while the taxpayer is expected to sponge up the entire one hundred percent. And I would like to see both pursued. I would like to thank Councillor Martin McDermott, like other councillors have, and Councillor Albert Doherty for their work, Martin's work as Chair and Albert on the committee. Two very honourable people. And I want to thank the staff and the planning and the MICA section of Donegal County Council, whose workload has multiplied by at least tenfold. And it makes it so much more difficult to administer a scheme that is not your own scheme. And I know this is a scheme that was given to them to administer. And as I say, it does make it more difficult. And I wish the MICA redress committee every success also in the work that they have done and where they continue to in the future. Their job is a very, very difficult one. Can I close this door because there's a noise coming in? Sorry about that. And I just want to agree with Councillor Bernard McGinnis and Councillor Blaney that there is a number of very serious allegations being made about a number of people. And surely putting this up on social media is not a responsible way to deal with what people think are serious issues. If people have legitimate, genuine, serious issues to raise, surely the Garda station is a place to raise them in, where they can be investigated properly. Or maybe the Garda should be visiting these people, making the allegations to follow up on them. Goro Maihaga, thank you very much.
My good, Councillor Donaghy, that is Councillor Michael McBride. You there, Michael?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I suppose firstly, I would like to apologize, I was bitterly joining the meeting, I was difficulty connecting, and I'm not sure why that was. But anyway, first of all, I would just like to thank Councillor Frank McPurdy for calling for this meeting. And I would like to thank Councillor, yourself, Chairman, Jack Murray for facilitating the meeting. And I would like to welcome all the members of the public that's online today. And I think it's important that you see that Donegal County councillors are supporting your campaign. And I fully support the call for a public inquiry and to the MICA scandal. I think it's most important that it happens. I support the one hundred percent redress MICA campaign for the people of Donegal. And that's for one hundred percent on all properties that are affected by MICA. And that is what I had down on my motion for the last plenary meeting. And I think that's most important, that it covers all properties that are affected by it. I suppose before I go any further, I would just like to thank Paddy Dever and everyone who helped him to organize the marches in Dublin and in Bonkranagh. And also to thank Ben Margie for his efforts in Lethaircinni and everyone who helped him to organize the march in Lethaircinni. And I suppose we have to thank all the people that gave up their time for to go and support those marches. And we also have to thank them for the dignified manner and what they, and how they carried themselves at all those marches that left you proud to be from Donegal. And I was proud to stand with those people off Donegal and Lethaircinni at the march that ran from the community centre to the public service centre and at the march in Dublin. I think, you know, the crowd was fantastic. And if that doesn't get the message through to government, I'm not quite sure what would get it through. And just also like to thank all the people who sponsored buses to go to Dublin. All the business people and indeed, I was glad to be able to help out myself and sponsoring the bus. Because I think it's important that we show support to all the people who are really struggling. And this is probably the most important meeting that I have been involved in at Donegal County Council since I've become a councillor myself. And we're quite clear at this point in time that the original scheme just doesn't work, hasn't worked and won't work. And we need a new one hundred percent scheme that works for the people. And that has to include second houses, because those second houses are home to somebody. And if you look at Lethaircinni, and I'm sure Bonkranagh and every other town is the same. If you try to look for a house to rent on them at the moment, on any given day, if you go on daft.ie or some of the forums, you'll be lucky if there are five houses to rent. And the problem that people are having is if second houses, second homes are not included, then eventually these houses will be closed up. And there are going to be no accommodation for people to live in. So that's something that we have to keep in mind as we move forward. We also have to look at all the other buildings, community centres, all the schools that we have in Donegal, and health centres and any other public building that's out there. We all need to look and see and make sure that those are included on the scheme. Because these are places that people use on a daily basis. And there's no pattern waiting until the MICA starts to show to a point where the building has to be closed. They all need to be tested and identified whether they have it or don't have it. And the plans put in place that the problem can be remedied, whether it's a rebuild or what it may be. Because places like community centres such as Rye and these types of places, they're the hub of their community. There are children in there every day. And we can't wait, these communities can't afford for these types of centres not to be operating. Families depend on them. They want to have to put them there and they must be supported. I know many people who have MICA in my own family circle, friends of mine and constituents that have called me and looking for advice on what they should do. And we really have to look at all the problems that are coming down the track. And one of the big problems that we're going to have whenever we get into the nuts and bolts of sorting out houses with MICA is going to be alternative accommodation. And I have a motion in for a municipal meeting next week. Asking for Donegal County Council to talk to the Minister for Housing and ask them to consider putting sites with log cabins on them that people can live in when their own houses have been repaired. And there are sites that come to mind in Lethaircinni, places like the old Unifi site, the old field site, the baking factory site. I would think as well, an area like Mulford and another municipal areas as well, particularly the Dorril area and the Anishone area, we should be looking at sites where we can put log cabins. So we know that we can provide accommodation for people when they're out of their own houses. And I think that's a motion that should be investigated. I think some of the sites that I've spoken about already have the services. They've got water, they've got electricity and they've got sewage. And I think we could be quite easily made up and take temporary accommodations for people that they could live in for a year when they're out of their own house. And the area of Donegal where their children are going to school and where they blame their sports and all this type of stuff. Because we can't drag them away to other parts of the county, it simply won't work. So that's something that I think we should be looking at. The spiral, the spiral in costs of rent is another thing. And I know in the town in Lethaircinni, three-bedroom semi-attached houses at the moment are making up to nine hundred euros per month. Nine hundred euros per month. Now, who can afford it on top of trying to pay a mortgage? It's simply not affordable. So we have to take a hard look at how we're going to accommodate people when they're not, when they're moving out of their own houses. And, you know, if we look back at this, and it's all right saying not to play the blame game. But we met with Damien English in two thousand and sixteen down in the Cairndona, in June two thousand and sixteen, in the Cairndona Public Service Centre. And, you know, when I left that meeting, my own feeling was that by the end of that year, that there would have been some type of a redress scheme put in place. And here we are, five years on, and we're still trying to get a redress scheme that works. And what has happened in the meantime, the cost of repairing and the cost of building has absolutely doubled. So the government has brought a lot of this burden on the taxpayers by sitting on their hands and not dealing with the issue that they knew was there. And we have to remember that, that's a fact. Another thing that I would just like to maybe to speak about briefly as well, there seems to be great frustration among people who have employed engineers and paid them for to put in reports about their houses, people who have paid out sixty-seven thousand euros. And they're constantly getting phone calls. I know one lady who's got four phone calls from the Donegal County Council or four communications from the council looking for further information. And these people are so frustrated that they're paying people so much money to try and get their house fixed again and to get it onto a state where they can live safely with their children. And they're continuously looking for F A. I think whatever information is missing, it should all come out together if there's any. And I also think that if the engineers that are preparing the reports were all taken in and put them through a workshop, then it would alleviate the problem. Teach them how to complete the forms properly before they send them to the council. Because it is very frustrating for the people that has to deal with it, and it's going on, it's going on every day. People think it's a stone tactic. Now, you can look at it any way you want, but the people that have paid out that money are so frustrated. Some of them are just crying when they get the phone call. Some of them don't know how to handle it. And I think we need to make sure that that stops happening. And I would ask that the council would have a look at that and try and figure out a better way to handle these things going forward. At all F A, F Is, if they're required, would be asked for at one time, not one and then fed another one and another one. I think it's very important to the people that are out there that that happens. Another thing that I would just like to speak briefly about, and it's probably the most important of all, is the mental health of people who are living in houses with MICA. And I think that the, I've got a motion in for a plenary meeting next week. Asking for Donegal County Council, through the office of the mayor or the chairman, sorry, to have a meeting, look for a meeting with the H G S E. And we need to make sure that the services are in place to support the families with MICA. And if there are adequate resources put in place to deal with the people who are struggling to cope with the blight of MICA on their daily lives, I think that is very, very important. And I'll speak more about it on Tuesday. We have plenty of other issues, but something I would also just like to maybe touch on today when we're here. I deal with people at construction every day during my own work. And I've spoken to people who have already been involved in repairing houses outside leaves only, not full rebuilds, outside leaves. And I've been reliably informed that it takes a team of four men almost three months to take down an outer leaf and to repair a house. So if we look at what we've got in Donegal, we're thinking or estimating that we have about five thousand houses. Excuse me? We're estimating that we have about five thousand houses with MICA. Now, if they were only, if these were only to repair the outside leaf, we would need five hundred people in the construction industry for ten years to repair them. We know there's a lot of houses that are going to be rebuilt, are going to have to be rebuilt. So we simply don't have the labour in Donegal for to do the work. Everybody will tell you at the moment that's involved in the construction industry, we can't get the help, we could use more people. This is before the MICA work even starts. So I'm thinking, there's a lot of people who are demigrated from this country after the demise of the Celtic Tiger. Many went to Canada, to the UK, to Australia and other shores. And we should probably be looking at putting, you know, a call out to these people, asking them if they would consider to come home. Because a lot of them, when they're away seven or eight or ten years, probably are thinking about coming home anyway. A lot of them might have children, they would rather put them into schools and raise them here in Ireland. And that might be a good time for us to sit and look at that. And I would maybe ask that our own MICA committee would put that on the agenda and have a look at it. I think it would be a very constructive move for us to make going forward. And I suppose another thing that maybe I think might be helpful is I know we have our own MICA committee and the council. And I suppose everybody's doing their best to try and help the people that are out there in Donegal. But what I'm going to say is, sometimes I feel a wee bit removed from that committee because I'm not a member, we're not all members of it. And I think it would be a good idea that when the minutes of those meetings are passed, that they would all be circulated to the rest of the members by email. Because I think it's very important that there's no misinformation, that everybody knows what's happening, what's been discussed, what's on the table and what maybe the plans are going forward. So, look, there's a lot of good points split up by a lot of members here today. And I think we have a big, big challenge in our hands going forward. I'm not getting the vibes that I would like to get from government. I'm sceptical, frankly, sceptical about the one hundred percent, although that's what I'm calling for, is a hundred percent redress scheme. And I think no matter what happens, as Donegal County councillors, we must stand with the people of Donegal and make sure that we get a one hundred percent redress scheme for them, because nothing else will work. That's what we need, the one hundred percent redress scheme. So I'll leave it at that today, Mr. Chairman, and I just thank you for giving me the time to speak. Thank you.
No problem, Michael. Thank you. Next, Councillor Gerry Crawford.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, thank you for the meeting and also the opportunity afforded by Reenie at our last meeting. It's indeed fortunate that we have the opportunity to discuss this. Very many of us are affected and noble people who are affected by this. And it's important that we will share our concerns and to hear the concerns of others. Just at the, I want to acknowledge the work that's done by the council staff. It's been monitored, I know, by the MICA committee within the council. And if there's any progress to be made there, I'm sure they'll be making representations for that. I also feel that it's a serious oversight not to have included members of the council MICA committee on the redress group. And that includes Councillor Doherty and Councillor Martin McDermott. And I know have worked tirelessly and have advised and I have sought advice from them on this matter. The area of East Donegal is heavily affected. And at the last meeting, last, our own last area meeting, I asked a question about how many, how many houses in the Lefferton RMD was affected. And the answer wasn't informative. Indeed, it was everything but, but this is a different day. And I have another question for next meeting next week is how the council propose to conclusively determine the number of council-owned houses countywide that are affected by MICA? And I think it's important that the public and the tenants and the general public be aware of the, how that is going to be determined and when it's likely to be determined. And I also had requested and repeat that request, that the council tenants be informed of the council's plans and what the council intends to do in that regard. I supported the last day, I have good reason to support it, my neighbours, my friends and many people I know in this particular area here have MICA. We have, we do need a hundred percent redress. And I fully support the people that are in Dublin negotiating that. And hopefully, and seriously, hope that they come away now with the result that is really needed, that's essential for the people who are left in this predicament. To me, there's classes of people who, maybe sometimes the older people, the older people who find themselves in this position, who, people are talking about ten, twelve, fifteen years to address the situation. who who have, people are talking about ten, twelve, fifteen years to to address the situation. Well, you know, the hands of time are promised to nobody. But it becomes even more difficult when the hands of time are moving on at a particular age. And you're like, you don't want to be burdened by the problems of MICA redress, you would like to see that sorted. The other thing that I would ask is that during the course of the summer recess, that you, Chairman, as chairman of this council, whatever way it can be done, whether it's through the clerk of the Dal or the concierge of the Dal, I'd request that all our activist members from the whole count, from the whole country, visit this county and see for themselves, not just the rest places in the news reports, but see for themselves the serious problem and the hardship that's been imposed on very many families in this county. I think it would be a worthwhile visit for them over the course of the summer. If that, if if that invitation were extended, then it's up to themselves. Finally, the other issues that I would have is that was brought. I think we do need an explanation as to what role the council or whoever has on the licensing of the various, in the past and going forward. And how do we come to to a stage where we know that the houses that are being built from, in the particular areas now are being built with blocks that are not affected? And when was it likely that affected blocks were stopped being used for the construction of homes? There's very many families here who are in the early stages of occupying houses who may not even be aware or see any signs of MICA. But who who are becoming increasingly concerned that that may be their fate. So I just, again, I have no, no problem whatsoever. And an inquiry to establish the facts, that's something that we all need to know at some stage. This is a major issue and it has to, but the priority now, I think, should be that a hundred percent redress scheme is approved and that people who are affected here at least know that there's a way forward to ending the predicament that through no fault of their own, they find themselves in. Thank you, Chairman.
That's our Councillor Crawford. Uh, and I have Councillor Michael McMahon.
Right, Mr. Chair, and thanks very much for holding this meeting today. Uh, I want to welcome the people of Sealy who are looking at this today and listening to it. It's been a very, very worthwhile meeting because I've learned a terrible lot about the MICA, not to say that I didn't know anything about it through uh my colleague Albert Doherty, because I I can't say without fear when they come to the council and after our group meetings, Albert Doherty had it on every agenda about the MICA to me, so Albert, thank you for that. I would have to say that there there certainly a lot of work to be done there, there's no question about that. And we need to work to the, work together in this. Uh, innuendo and different accusations will not ratify this very, very serious situation as regard to people of North East Donegal. And you know, um, I often wonder how we got this far, how nobody had seen this coming or what went wrong or how it went wrong. So I am in full support of a public inquiry. There is no question about that. I'm in full support of a hundred percent, like are a party member, are in a hundred percent uh in in favour of that. But we need, we need to work together and as I think it was Gary Doherty said, we need to work closely with our other colleagues in different councils in Sligo, Mayo, uh Limerick and Leitham, uh if the MICA was there, and work as one unit there because that's very, very important. I would have to say, you know, that we don't need to uh keep bashing at the executive of Donegal County Council because as somebody, some councillors rightly said there, you know, they live in the area and they work in the area and they have a family going to school and uh, you know, we're all on him sheet and, you know, I don't think that's, that's the way to go forward. Uh, 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 when we go to the Dal or we talk to our public representatives or activist members, we need to be talking at one unit. And you know, the people that need to come up and uh to stand up and be counted here is the housing section. And I think they are failing the people in Donegal. In fact, I think they are failing the people all over the island of Ireland uh as regard to their housing programme. And um I think, you know, that we want to, I heard a councillor saying there, I think it was Michael McBride, we want to be very careful about our diaspora and immigrants there, asking them to come home to help out with the work because we have a terrible shortage of houses in Donegal and I don't think, you know, uh, whether they should be at home and would like to come home and want to come home. We we can provide houses for the people that already are living here. And we're going to get it very, very hard to house the people that are in them houses. So uh I would be careful about that. I think, you know, um, social media, and I'm not an expert on any by any means, and stuff goes up uh on social media, you know, and we talk about uh judicial inquiries and we talk about all sorts of inquiries. The only one inquiry that we need is a public inquiry to see how this happened. And I think that should be forthcoming. And I think uh somebody mentioned there about the department, the civil service and the Department of Housing. I think, you know, for our next meeting, and I don't know many meetings you're going to have, Jack, uh, you're going to have a very, very busy summer and probably a busy, very busy year, but you'll be fit to handle, there's no question about that. Civil servants should be made accountable to this because, you know, they they have, they they have been getting off the hook. I think we need a civil servant, the top civil servant or the minister to come back to Donegal here again and 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 to meet the council here and to meet all the committees again and find out exactly how this happened, uh why did it happen? But what we want immediately is a remedy, remedy, we want to get this fixed. Because uh as councillors as rightly said, people uh are suffering in their homes not knowing when they wait for an evening or wait for a night or what, that their house will be still standing when they come back. And it has a serious medical and mental health situation on them, you know. I have to say too, you know, that I don't think in all, with all respect, like Martin McDermott covered up on the, I I would, I would disagree totally about that. And Albert Doherty, I think, done a fantastic job there. So let's not, let's not get into into stone throwing and accusations and stuff like that. Let us stick with the one, the one thing in mind. And the one thing is mind to look after the people that are suffering, that they're suffering with with the housing crisis in regards to MICA, MICA. And as also that we stick tight by them. We support them one hundred percent. I would support them one hundred percent here in in the top, in the tip of Donegal. And and the only thing that we need to do is the action to go forward and 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 the workers wanted it. Otherwise, uh, we could, we could lose, we could lose the battle. Uh, Chair, uh, thank you for that and you've handled yourself very well there on your first day and thank you all very much.
All right, good morning. Uh, now I have just two other people that I think came in, uh, Councillor Sheeran Rogan and then Miall Connolly last week, and let Frank in briefly just a bit. So I see Tom Conahan there, I'll put you down too, Tom.
Thank you for your luck and I want to acknowledge and thank you for for this opportunity today. Um, whereas a lot of what has been said, uh, a lot of very valuable contributions have been made by many here. Um, I have to say for my part that this is the single biggest crisis that I think we've ever witnessed uh as a people here in Donegal. Um, it's causing an awful lot of stress and anxiety on many, many people. And that's very, very evident um by the people that I'm meeting on a daily basis. We all have family and friends uh who are affected by MICA. Um, and it's affecting everyone and it's something we need to work together to try and get a resolution through. Because it's an Irish thing that people have huge pride in their home. Some people work very, very hard all the days of their life and it's all about trying to provide a home um for themselves and indeed their family and their children. This is having a huge effect on many, many people. Um, I was glad to stand with my colleagues in Dublin and that day with the people from Donegal. And I concur fully what has been said about Donegal, um people standing united and dignified that day in Dublin in the way they did as a people. And I think we're very strong as a people here at Donegal and we've always um had that sort of resilience. But I have to say this is one that's definitely testing an awful lot of people. And I'll concur fully what was said earlier about the effects that it's having on mental health and our health services as well. It's a known fact, the stress brings on a lot of sicknesses and illnesses. And this is very, very evident with this issue at the moment and a subject we're going to have to monitor very closely. And as a council, that's important, as we did the last day of the council meeting, it presented a very, very strong message that we are standing full square with our own Donegal people, looking for the hundred percent redress scheme. Uh, I stand full square with all my party colleagues and all the rest of the colleagues across the council in doing so. And delighted in two thousand and nineteen when we formed this new cross-party uh working arrangement in the council, that number one on the agenda was us setting up our own MICA Donegal Committee. That's very, very important. I want to join with the calls we've made earlier and I fully support it, that we should be asking for the chairman and the vice-chairman of the MICA group, um, Martin McDermott and Albert Doherty to be uh part of the committee that's meeting nationally. They are our representatives and we have every confidence in them. Uh, I have to say for my part that Martin McDermott was very, very informative to all of us about MICA for years and years. And in fact, he was the first person that acknowledged that there was huge hurdles with the current scheme when it was identified. He has huge and vast knowledge of it. He he knows firsthand and when it was uh with him in his own area some time ago, a number of years ago, uh when he was identifying a lot of the challenges that we now seem to come from here. Um, so we need to ensure that they have our full support. I'm glad as well that the, the government has recognized and that there will um be no hurdles in the way to a public inquiry. That has been indicated very clearly by the government. And that's someone that people need and deserve the answers as well. Uh, I think it's the very least that people um want to seek a transparency and accountability of what went wrong here uh in this area uh over the years. Um, I think it's important as a council, uh and I want to acknowledge the staff of the council as well because they're human beings as well and they have health and they have stress as well. And it's important that we acknowledge the huge challenge that it is for them. Donegal County councillors are, um, I suppose merely administrating this scheme on behalf of the government. It's a massive task. It's a massive task for them to undertake. And it's been a very, very challenging time for for the management of the council and indeed the staff working in this area. And as we've called before, and I know councillor McDermott uh was working on it behind the scenes, for us to have additional resources in place to deal with this whole area around MICA. And I think what was mentioned before about having the liaison officers uh to deal with it is very, very important. Because that initial uh conversation um is very, very trying for many people. Um, it's been a very emotional time for many people. I've had conversations with many people late into the night and early morning who can't sleep at night because of it. And I think our council staff need to get the proper resources uh to help them to deal with the support and the challenge that this is. Because this is just uh more than some of the daily problems that we've all encountered over the years. But I want to acknowledge the council staff who have been working hard to try and come up with resolutions. Because I know the planning section have been working, um, working hard and our councillor Paul Cannon, who's the chair of the S P C, has been working with planning to try and maybe possibly introduce or change uh through a statutory instrument uh the issue of the rebuilding, the planning and how it can alleviate a lot of the hurdles that's there as well. So behind the scenes, I think there's a lot of work happening and I want to acknowledge the council staff that's doing that and trying their best because it is a very, very challenging time for them as well. Um, the final point I'll make, we're in this together, we're all in it together. And we need to send out a very, very strong message that we will stand with our people and we will try and get what we can, the best deal for all of the people because it's affecting everybody. Class, colour or creed, it doesn't matter, and it's a massive, massive issue. I'm glad today that we have the opportunity to hear that and to show the people and demonstrate to the people again that Donegal County Council is doing everything that it possibly can as a local authority to try and find solutions. Thank you very much.
All right, Councillor Rogan. Uh, Councillor Miall Connolly last week.
Uh, good morning, Jack. Uh, by the way, just answering sort of Frank McBarty. But when you can you show scar to you because by the man is order chain, Jack. Uh, more higher level when you call the hundred and all, uh, show that you had a career war. Uh, more higher level, I guess, take him to the water, it's the show that's it, more to show, it's the was the world which does show, not to the girl here. But world which the was the that they have to say that in the journey. Um, just couple of ways I'm said, just, why I'm said just to reach him here. Thank you.
Sorry, Miall. Right, very bad reception where we are. It's, it's, I go.
It's the water, I can hear you. I know you better now, Jack, so you're in this fair.
Better than that.
Yeah, I saw by the way, uh, yeah, I be at a hundred percent redress, which but I'm talking to him and we might want to clear that the meal seller, uh, but I can redress, I can be index based. I guess faster, she'll have here, the red on the D N E T scanner in the banks I guess in the insurance companies, the red uh scar to be caught to stay at the show now. I guess the red, the red if I show you, we chat to stay as Konya. For the Hyundai one and all, I guess, mean you D N E, D U N E. The tea, the chart, the real test, my journey, my greenie, if you go home on, uh, 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 show. This, this much into go on the mortgage, I guess, go on the policies, I get banks, I guess, it's again insurance company. So the main symbol is, but the Daniel get a car last. Uh, got to pull the Hyundai one and all, scar to be kept a scanner in the banks, the fee she Hyundai, I guess, insurance company. I guess, could you cook it to stay, I guess, presentation in the D U N E, I guess, mean you D U N E, but you must have to call me or show faster. Faster, by the way, uh, honey, when in in the show, or in uh, can, or not can I don't know about this panel? I guess, enough for ten problems short a couple of time, and my hand to come or go my channel. The was the uh they have to neglect you in the door particular, uh, we make a nice little couple of sharing. Uh, the ruin of God, that's you, I'm so nice, you can create a new level to hold the Hyundai one and all. My shield and go to the water, I guess, we're in S U L that I can't come on, when the cooler really good air. Uh, the red D U N E for another bond, the was the to hold the Hyundai one and all. I guess, net to be core, uh, core, brew or a football in my own son. I go, I guess, the meal to have you, but when you engineer so less day, and up a show, a genuine that tourist to order to hold the Hyundai one and all. The red D U N E more holder on day, for an online or vehicle, I guess, the red D U N E we just up a show, see the nasty, I guess, to my S U L, you can create a new level. I can't uh omron, still, uh, Michael McBride, I can show, you still can, for data, a darn it, chat. You can't see the chat, D U N E, we are J L M A, when you get your cola tomorrow, possible of all your funds, but then you have to vote.
The line's terrible again there, sorry.
Hey, Jack, for connection, thanks anyway.
All right, good morning. Uh, the last person I've indicated, as I say now, I can't, I can't see most of you, with Tom Conahan, I've just indicated, Tommy there.
Thank you, Chair. Um, all right. Um, I would just like to pay tribute to everybody taking part in this and uh I'd like to thank you for the way you have chaired this meeting today. I'm sure it wasn't easy and it wasn't a short one. And um it's very important and we're looking for everybody and and we know everyone means well, council executive, Martin and Albert, which is very important in that area and different other areas and uh all very capable. And I would have to say that our, that our, our councillors are equally as capable of doing, getting things sorted out as well. And the other, I'm not going to hold you too long because I know you've gone through a lot today. And um the other thing is, I I think now at this stage, you know, everybody has voiced their opinion and the fact, and as far as I would be concerned, I would think the talking's, the talking's finished now locally and all the rest, and it's time to get on with it and uh be more productive and get things sorted out and uh that everybody all together and work together. And I think as you said yourself, it's only when the things are going to be done. Thank you again, Chair.
All right, that's, that's our column. Uh, just Frank, I'll let you in uh briefly, because I know you.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, everybody call, can I come on first, Chair?
I indicate first one question. In fairness, Martin didn't make a full contribution, he only kind of replied earlier. Go ahead, Mark.
Thanks, Jack. I think, um, again, thanks, Jack, for for the meeting and the way you handled the meeting today, it was, it was excellent. Um, thanks to everybody for the contributions and to the general public. I think there's just a couple of things, Jack, there's no point in going over everything again. Everybody knows the position we're on, everybody knows where we are. Everybody knows that we want a hundred percent redress. Um, everybody knows the issues that have been put by the committee. And I want to acknowledge the committee, Patty, and ever, Michael Doherty and Aileen Doherty, the work that they're doing in relation to that committee as well. Um, I suppose it is disappointing that our committee is not represented, but look, that's, that's a decision that I made. Um, just a couple of things that I want to to, uh, but as the liaison officers, it was something that that was being taken up a couple of times today, something that had come up at our meeting. And we were assured at that meeting that it was, it went to the department for a sign off for extra staff. I just want to know where that is and how quickly that can be set up. Because I do think that that will be a very, very important step for the council to have a liaison officer, two liaison officers. One based in the show, one based in Larrick Kenny to, to deal with Larrick Kenny and Stenarder area. I think that for both private and for council tenants, I think that that liaison officer could play, could play a lead role. And somebody that people can access on a daily basis. And I think it'd be vitally important if that could happen as soon as possible. And maybe we could get an update in relation to that. I think the, the engineers are meeting this afternoon, Engineers Ireland, with all the engineers to discuss the issues that engineers are having, to discuss the fears that engineers are having. I think it's important that Engineers Ireland are the group that runs it, engineers and that the engineers have signed up to. And I think it's important that those engineers make those calls themselves. I think that we're not engineers. I think it's important that the engineers do make those calls and, and come up with the, the answers that they need for themselves. I think the avenue through that is with Engineers Ireland. And as far as I know, they're meeting today at three o'clock to, to discuss those, those things and, and go back to the department. So I think that's vitally, vitally important. There's also questions that have come up today in relation to quarries and whether tests have been done. I think they are important questions that the people do need answers to. I think that we as a council should have those answers for the general public and for ourselves. As to make sure, I mean, the, the biggest fear that we have in this is that there could be other houses outside, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and thirteen, whatever, this is really coming ahead. And I think that them questions need to be answered. And we need to know what the situation is in relation to the checking of the quarries and the checking of aggregate, checking of lots. And what has been happened today to make sure that that's not happening again. And we're all in agreement that there should be a public inquiry to see why this happened, how this happened, and to make sure that it never happens again. We're all in the same wavelength on that, Jack. And I just want to, again, thank you for conducting an excellent meeting today. And, and at least we can, we're all working together and I think it's vitally important that we do all work together to get the best outcome. Because the most important thing that we have to do now is get people's houses fixed. Get people that are living in this nightmare situation, to get them back to some type of a normal life. And I think that has to be our main priority. And I think we should allow the team that's there negotiating now until the end of July, the room and the, the room to do those negotiations and give them our full support to see what comes out of that. And then we can make our judgments after that. Thanks, Jack. I'm sorry, if you're going to acknowledge the work that councillor Doherty has done for the committee as well.
Good morning. That, that, that's everybody's indication, the contribution. Frank, I'm going to take you in briefly, because I know you did have a bit of a thing at the start. And then I'll hand it over to the executive just for our response.
No, thank, thank you, thank you, Mayor. The first point I want to make is, I spoke to John McGlaughlin yesterday about Cassidy's concrete been poured down in Rethmone. And we in Stenarder, Lifford and Stenarder M D had a proposal that that would stop and that all funding and all money owed to Cassidy's would be withheld by the council. The next issue I want to rebut what councillor McDermott said earlier on, which I asked you at the very start and you've allowed me to come in. First of all, I accept what councillor Albert Doherty has said, that he had no knowledge of the email in February. But as a public office holder, councillor McDermott has a responsibility when information is given to him in the public interest. That public interest information should have been relayed to us as members. But more importantly, that information was also relayed to the council staff. And they should have automatically told all the members of Donegal County Council. And I hope that the executive today are going to try and answer some of the questions that we have asked. In particular, when councillor Brogan and councillor Gerry McMonigal were mayor of this county, did they engage with the expert panel? And did councillor McDermott engage with that expert panel? Now, I specifically read out from appendix one of the expert panel report, who are not experts, by the way. I read out what I wanted. I want to know what members of Donegal County Council met that expert panel. And I want to know what Donegal County Council officials met them and what TDs in this county also met them, who all agreed with the ninety ten scheme. And I want to know that. But I want to know the whole list from one to twenty one on appendix one, list of persons, organizations who met with the panel. I asked that at the very start and I want an answer today. And I want an answer from the former mayor Gerry McMonigal, if he had any dealings with the expert panel. And councillor Kieran Brogan as mayor, did he have any dealings with the expert panel? And if they did, please disclose those discussions and whatever was agreed with them as mayor of the county at the time. And if John Campbell, previous to that, also had any engagement with the, the expert panel. So I want those questions answered and I'll tell you this now through the chair. I want to finally say this, I want to thank you, Jack, personally for being the man I know you are and establishing this meeting. And the bottom line here is, the previous mayor denied me the same, the same request that I requested for a special meeting. She denied it, point blankly denied it. And the other final thing I'll say is that the members of any shown municipal district are well aware in two thousand and fourteen, from two thousand and nine to two thousand and fourteen, from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and nineteen, up to the present day about the purchasing of those properties in Bonkana. But not only that, they knew that they were leased on a long term leasing scheme. Simple as that, that is what the paper trail says. So we need to start the work now and people leaving this meeting today, that's not honest, far as I'm concerned. This is the most important issue that we have to deal with as councillors. And we should be meeting every day, putting these issues to the council for the next month. We should have our own inquiry, what Donegal County Council and the allegations against Donegal County Council that have been made. We need to put people to account and hold them to account and get the answers that we need for the public and the public interest. And I will not support you councillor McDermott as chair of the Mica Action Group because you did not relay a, a public interest information that was vital for us to start telling engineers to stop breaking the law and recommending remedial works. Public and private engineers, both in the private sector and the public sector, are breaking the law by recommending remedial works, simple as that. And the final thing I'll say is, who from the Irish Concrete Federation met with the expert panel? That needs to be clarified by the council and by the department and by the panel. Because if it was, if it was, if it was David Cassidy or any people from Cassidy's, that is a kick in the teeth to us, the members of Donegal County Council, the public and to every victim in this scandal today. So thank you, Chair.
Okay. Unless anybody else wants to come in there, I don't know what people named, I tend to go to the executive. Executive, hundreds of questions have been put forward, hundreds of concerns. And particularly all the public that are in here want to hear the response to those.
Mayor, just one thing, Mayor, one, one, one thing, Mayor. How many, many members of the public, how many members of the public have clicked on to this meeting today? Because that should be clarified.
There's ninety nine participants, the minute I was around a hundred and thirty at one point. We need to move on from it. Go ahead, Martin.
I just want to point of order, I never met with the expert.
That's fair enough, it's noted. Any else, any else with that, happy to move on and get a response from the executive? Okay. John McGlaughlin, do you want to come in first or, there's a number of all the directors here, so everyone wants to speak.
Yeah, Kieran, shall I go first? No, first of all, yeah, thank you very much, I'd say. I know we spoke the last day and I'd open with, as I did say the last day, we fully acknowledge the terrible situation that this is for homeowners and the anger and despair causes right across the county. We spoke the last day with the three different strands we have. One was working as a council here to bring people together in other communities. Two was the role we have by government administering a scheme for the private houses. And three is the role for our own council housing stock, three very important strands and we have to balance them all. A lot of talk on the screen today about the history and so on and the work from the, the early special meetings of council, the lobbying of government, onto the expert panel, then the, the scheme getting set up around twenty nineteen. And I would say during that setting up of the scheme, the government asked us, would we administer it for them? And Donegal County Council said yes, thought that'd be a help to our local citizens. And we took on that added work at the time. And we were glad we took it on and we thought we could be helpful to that. Now, as it, as it worked, as it turned out, there's concerns with that scheme. And while there's three parties, say, involved, there's the scheme itself by government, there's the applications and then there's the processes. So, and I'm not going to comment today on which one, which ones it's fault here, but those are the three different prongs that have to be looked at. The, the rules that council staffer has to follow and then the applications themselves and how they match the scheme. And if the scheme is fit for purpose, and a lot of people have spoken about it, why it's not. And I'm not in a position today to comment on that, but I would accept the government's working through that right now, this month with the working group. And we're all waiting for those replies also and what the new revised scheme might bring and how it might sort out some of these problems. I think also, I'd, I'd mentioned, and before inviting some of the directors, it's important for us collectively to decide as a body, can we be part of the solution and how to be part of that solution as opposed to focusing on the problems? Lots of issues highlighted today, I would say, some which we can answer now. We want, we want to and we will provide clarity around every single question on whether it falls to the council to answer, who else it might fall to, and if the council can be assistance in getting those answers. And we'll do that separately. There's a lot of, now I have a lot of notes, I'm sure others have the full notes here on the different queries. And I might stop for now at that and I might ask in first Joe Peoples, who's the director of housing and corporate services, to talk about, I think, three things insofar as he can. One might be the procurement advice, because that came up quite a bit the last day and it makes a couple of times a day. The, how we're processing the schemes, including the liaison offers that we sought and agreed some time ago and any other further staff. And then also on our plan for the council housing stock that we spoke about the last day and how, how there was merit in keeping both sets of housing working roughly in parallel, so no one would be left behind. But Joe might comment on those three things, Joe, first, if that's okay, and I might commute and then come back in.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Kehuda, and, and thanks, Chief Executive. Again, I just would begin by saying, as I did the last day, that it's an unforeseen situation that we're all dealing with here in the county. And it's important that we work together to achieve the best outcomes for our friends and our families and our communities. And that's, that's why we're all here and that's all our objectives. And the chief executive mentioned the, the willingness of the council about two years ago to administer the scheme. Because that's what we're here to do as public servants, we're here to help our people in the county. And that's why we decided to do that and wanted to do it and have worked to do it to the best of our ability. It is a very complex scheme. And we have seen the workings out of that complexity over the last twelve months since the scheme opened. And that has given rise to many of the issues that have been raised and are being raised in relation to the processing of applications and the decisions around the applications. Having regard to the terms of the scheme that we have to administer. So we have to make significant judgments around the terms of the scheme. And we're duly bound to do that. We have to be satisfied that if we're making a grant award, that we can stand over that and that it's within the terms of the scheme and it's fair to the applicant and it's appropriate for the circumstances. And we're doing that at the moment in the context of the scheme as it currently exists. And the scheme may change. And there might be adjustments made to the scheme as we go forward when the working group work comes to a conclusion. Hopefully at the end of this month. If there are individual applicants who are concerned about how their application's been processed, they could email me directly and I'll arrange to have them followed up personally. For any applicant who has a concern about their application or how their application was dealt with, please feel free to do that and we'll, we'll arrange to have them followed up and clarification provided. I'd say one of, one of the challenges in terms of the administration of the scheme was that complexity. And we were fortunate that colleagues in the housing director here had very extensive experience of the detail around the assessment that needed to be made from a technical perspective. And once we got into that process then, I suppose it became challenging in relation to opinions of engineers, maybe perhaps differing in relation to what, what the appropriate outcome would be or what the appropriate remedial work should be. And that has, that has been challenging for everyone involved in the process up to now unquestionably. And continues to bring challenge, but we're working through that. And I think there's, there is certainly clarity emerging. In terms of what happens going forward, we obviously wait to the national deliberations and see what emerges from that. And if there are changes to the scheme, as I said, we, we, we certainly look at what the options are in relation to that and how the scheme actually might be improved in, in the broader sense in terms of timely decision making for our citizens so that they can move on with the remedial work that's so badly needed and so urgently needed. In terms of the, the legal advices that the, the members are awaiting, the legal advice on, on procurement that the members asked for before is currently being prepared and the intention is certainly to have that available for members at the meeting in July, which is on the nineteenth of July, so that information, that legal opinion will be available to the members at the July meeting. In terms of, in terms of the social housing, absolutely accept that there's a huge body of work to be done there and it needs to be done at peace. It's not something we can delay at this stage, but as the chief executive has said, it's important that these processes are, processes are done in parallel as well. So I'm very conscious of the concern of our tenants and the challenges faced by our staff. We're trying to give good advice and support our tenants through this unprecedented situation that we find ourselves in. I think as I said at the meeting previous to this, we have now got the results back on a number of houses that have done, that have been tested in line with the, the national standard. We're preparing remedial works plans on an individual house basis. So that will tell us what work is required to our houses in general terms and in broad terms and what the likely cost will be. And that work would, would expect to be completed probably within the next week. That will, that will then form the basis of an overall indication of what the likely cost would be of remediation to our council housing stock, which we consider to be hanging around a thousand, that we might consider to be affected at the moment. But as we all know with Mica, we couldn't be definitive about that. And it may be that that number would rise or increase with the passage of time. So to be wrong to say that, you know, definitively we have nine hundred and sixty houses or a thousand and forty houses, that will be a moving target, members. And, and it's something we, we'll, we'll deal with as well. But we're certainly very clear where we have houses affected, we're very clear and what estates those houses are, where they are, and the, the number of houses. So we're in, in and around the high nine hundreds at the moment, but as I say, that's a moving target. In terms of, in terms of delivering that body of work, there's no question that we will have to put there's no question that we will have to put a dedicated team of staff at that work and we plan to do that. And that would include, uh, tech, senior technical staff who would do the assessments, do the design and what's needed in terms of media works, do the procurement and oversee the works. And we do not have the resources currently employed to do that, so we have to put that team in place. And we also have to address the issue that members have raised as well. And I think there's an option here for combining the two. Liaison with tenants and liaison with applicants for the, for the private scheme, liaison officers there. I think there's a, a need for liaison with tenants and a need for liaison with applicants to the scheme as well. And that's something that we have gone to the department on in terms of getting approvals uh, for liaison officers, as Professor McDermott has said. And we expect that that would be my favor, we'd be in the department to give the, to employ those staff and to cover the pay costs of them and what, and whatever additional staff we may need as well. So maybe I'd leave it at that, Kahira, just in terms of where we're at. What's the, what's the programs that we're running at the moment? Thank you.
Thanks, Joe, yeah, yeah, what we might do, and I see, uh, County Berdys hand up, and maybe, Kierlik, we might take the other directors first, is that okay?
I tend to let all the directors in first before any consulting with their questions.
Yeah, the next person to speak would be, as would Liam Ward, if Liam didn't mind, in terms of the, uh, the part that falls under the planning directorate.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Chief Executive, and, and, and thanks, Kahira, um, and, and, and members. Um, I suppose first of all, I, 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 I would like to, to concur with the comments of the Chief Executive in, in terms of, um, I suppose the executive and, and, and sharing the, I suppose, the, the concern for our people in the county that are, are going through this at the moment and, and just to confirm what some members have said as well, that obviously, we all know, and, and including in my own family circle, people who are going through this at the moment, and we, we do fully appreciate the real impact this is having on, on, on people's lives. Uh, uh, and we're, we're certainly not immune to that. Uh, and, you know, we're anxious to play our part and, and, and helping to, you know, to, to, to seek redress for that. Um, there were a number of issues which fall directly, uh, on the as both the, the, the planning, uh, the broad planning services. Um, I, I'd quickly go through them first and then maybe respond in some detail, as much detail as I possibly can at this point. Uh, the first issue was, was raised by Councilor McBrarty in, in his introduction uh, in relation to action against, legal action against quarries and, and referencing a specific quarry. The second issue was raised by a, a, a number of members, uh, and I think it is an important point and I know, uh, it, it's important that it, that it, there's clarification around it. And that is the role of the council. The role of the council and, and the various periods through which we have now come. Uh, with regard to the, I suppose, the certification or the testing or the approval of concrete blocks or concrete, uh, or products generally that, uh, get into the, um, get into the marketplace. So I, I, I certainly want to return to that. Um, the third issue that was raised, and again, uh, by a number of councillors, was, uh, in relation to um, the planning permission being extended for a specific quarry. Um, I, I may not be able to get into the detail on that, but I will certainly come back to that one. Um, the fourth issue that was raised by a number of members was around, uh, the role of, of what role our planning section, our planning department can have in terms of, um, maybe an, an influence or helped, helping to, um, develop a, appropriate regulations around, you know, the planning permissions required for, for individuals who are now ha- having to, uh, demolish their houses and rebuild their houses. And if they are within their own, their own, the existing footprint, you know, what, what regulations could be and certainly happy to return to that. Uh, and the council is obviously happy to play, play its part in that. There was a, a, a few speci- very specific questions, uh, raised by Councillor Gerry Crawford. Uh, and releasing to, I suppose, can we be sure that houses being built today? That, um, they are not, uh, using, or that they're not defective blocks or defective concrete products going into them? And the other specific question he raised was, do we know when the use of such products was stopped? Uh, I, I'm not going to be in a position to be definitive on that very last one, but I'll certainly come back to the one before that. Um, so the first one, taking them in order and what they were raised, was the question, um, posed by, by Councillor McBrarty, um, seeking, I suppose, updates in, in relation to uh, actions against quarry operators. Um, he, he, he mentioned, um, that he raised this matter at a Snorrer Municipal District meeting. And he asked the director to, director who was there to, to raise the matter directly with me. I can confirm that that was done. My colleague did raise the matter with me. Uh, and subsequent to that, um, I, I have obviously taken advices from, from our own legal, um, legal representative, um, as, as members, as most generally, but certainly members in the Snorrer, uh, Leford Municipal District are aware. Uh, the, the specific one that was referenced by Councillor McBrarty is, is ongoing for a considerable period of time. A considerable period of time. I understand the members' frustration, uh, with regard to, I suppose, um, seeking the right outcome there or getting the right outcome. Um, but I would say to him that we are in the hands of the court here. Um, and, um, that we are due in, in the court again next week on this one. I'm not going to get into the detail of it because clearly that would not be appropriate. But just to say that this is an ongoing enforcement matter and it is before the courts and will be before the courts next week again. Um, and as I say, other than to confirm that, I'm not in a position to go into any further detail today. Um, the next item I wanted to move on to then, which I, I, I agree is, is, is both is, is fundamental here and has been raised and by a number of members has said is, is both is the role of the local authority in terms of, um, the, the, the contract, concrete products, concrete blocks and, and other products, uh, that are in the marketplace. Um, what I would like to do here is, I suppose, is, is, is to make reference to the, the, the regulations that were in place at various times dur- during the last while. Um, I think the first one is the, the regulations that were in place prior to twenty thirteen. When, um, I suppose the, the, um, the community product regulations of, of twenty thirteen came into play. So the ones that were in play before that, and I think there would be a general view that quite, quite a number, and I'm not being specific here, but I think it's fair comment to say that a number of the houses and, and buildings that are, that are now affected by MICA would have been constructed prior to twenty thirteen. So it was important to look at what the regulations were in place in that time and what role the council may or may not have had. So, so the principal regulations, and forgive me members, I, I'm going to read directly from some notes here that I have, so, um, but the principal regulations that were in place in that time were cited as the European Community's Construction Products Regulations nineteen ninety-two. And they came in, uh, to operation on the first of January nineteen ninety-three. It's under a, a specific statutory instrument. Um, they were amended in nineteen ninety-four. Uh, the amendment were, were quite minor in, in the period in ninety-three. The, the mark to, uh, I suppose, prove that products were to a standard was known as an EC mark. From nineteen ninety-four onwards, it was known as the CE mark. Uh, and these regulations were in place until they were revoked by the twenty thirteen regulations coming into play. So what did those regulations say? Those regulations, they, I, I suppose, first of all, what was the purpose of them? Um, the, these were, I suppose, European Union directives. And that their primary objective was to facilitate the free movement of construction products, products across the member states, that was their primary objective. But what did they say was that a product which bears the EC mark, as it was known at the time, and then changed to the CE mark, uh, shall be presumed until the contrary is proved to comply with the requirements for placing the product on the market and with the provision of any other community directive applicable to that product. Um, so there was a process, process of attestation of conformity with technical specifications. Those were set out in the regulations. And I suppose, and, and they placed certain responsibilities on different players within, within the process. Um, I suppose there was a responsibility first and foremost on the manufacturer. Uh, to ensure that their fab- factory production control was in place. And that they, they took testing of samples taken at the factory by the manufacturer uh, in accordance with the required tests. And then there was an approved bodies task. And that was, uh, included the type testing of the product, the inspection of the factory and the factory production control, the continuous surveillance and assessment and approval of factory production control. And possibly, as it was referred to at the time, was the audit testing of samples taken at factory on the market or the construction site. Um, the approved body referred there, and it was important to be clear, the council wasn't the approved body. Um, uh, because this was effectively certifying the products. Uh, and that role is carried out by the national standards, uh, of Ireland, the NSAI. But the, those regulations did, but, uh, ha- ha- oh, sorry, did outline a role for the local authority. Um, and under Article eight, it says that the minister, the minister or a building control authority may appoint officers to be au- authorized officers for the purposes of the regulations. And authorized officers have powers to obtain access to the manufacturing sites, to request documentation such as the EC certificates of conformity, to take samples for examination or testing, and to require tests to be performed by an approved body to verify compliance with minimum requirements. The local authority also had, uh, powers assigned to it during this period, which included the making of recommendations to the minister concerning the prohibition or restriction of products going into the marketplace and for the prosecution of offences. As opposed to answer the question, as far as I'm aware today, that no such reports or recommendations to the minister were made in the period up to twenty thirteen, that I'm aware of. If we move on then to the, to the period since twenty thirteen. Um, and this is where the construction product regulations came into being and were effective from the first of July twenty thirteen. And I suppose that, um, that, those regulations, uh, established, um, market surveillance authorities and the local authorities were appointed as the market, uh, surveillance authority for their functional areas. Um, and it, it goes on to say, and again, I, I read directly from the, the, uh, from, from the regulations. It says a market surveillance authority shall be a building control authority in respect of construction products placed on the market or as the case may be, made available on the market within its functional area. And shall be responsible for the market surveillance of co- construction products placed on the market or as the case may be, made available on the market within its functionally area and shall take such steps as are necessary for this purpose. And the market surveillance authority, in effect, the, the building control authority, or in essence, the local authority, shall appoint authorized officers for the purpose of the regulations. And these officers shall have powers to obtain accesses to places of manufacture or storage of any con- concrete product. So there's clearly a, a role there, uh, from the twenty thirteen regulations. So what did happen? Um, I suppose in that period, um, as I said, the council were designated as the market surveillance authority. So following the introduction of that, Donegal County Council, as this market surveillance authority, wrote to all manufacturers and suppliers in the county, seeking evidence of their CE marks and declarations of performance for construction products that they were placing in the market. And this included all concrete products and supplies. And supply, suppliers, sorry, I beg your pardon, and suppliers. So the, the next, I suppose, period then would be, um, the establishment of the National, uh, Building Control Office. And while that was, um, I suppose, commenced in twenty fourteen. And the, the role of the National Building Control Office was to provide oversight, support and direction for the development and standardization and implementation of building control as an effective shared service in the thirty-one local authorities. Uh, documented to being in, in twenty fourteen. And it has been managed on behalf of the local authority sector by Dublin City Council. But there's, it was a specific development which occurred in, in twenty twenty, which is material here. And, and it's linked actually to, um, the decision by the UK to, to lead the European Union. And it came in a, as, uh, standard and, uh, statutory instrument six eight two of twenty twenty. It's referred to as the withdrawal of the United Kingdom from the European Union. Consequences Provision Act twenty twenty, the Construction Products Market Surveillance Regulations twenty twenty. And as I say, it appointed Dublin City Council, National Building Control Office, as the lead local authority for National Market Surveillance Office, which, as I said, provides the, the oversight and the role here on behalf of the thirty-one building control authorities. Um, what I can say in relation to that is that the Donegal County Council Building Control Office is in regular contact with the NBECO. Um, and that within the last number of weeks, uh, the National Building Control Office has visited the county and has carried out visits to a number of quarries in the county, primarily in the Letterkenny and in his own areas. Um, I, I, I don't have the details of their findings as, as they're not available to me at this time. But I expect that I, that we, the council will receive them in due course. Um, so that's, that's where, where I, 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 I leave that particular one, uh, mayor. And if I can move on to, uh, the other matters that, that, that were raised. Um, in particular, in relation to, uh, what role Donegal Planning Department can play, uh, in, in, as well as informing regulations that might be helpful to, uh, individuals who are now have to seek plan permission. We have engaged in that process through, uh, myself and our senior planner and consultation was obviously with, with, with colleagues. Um, and I suppose we have given some, um, suggestions certainly to department officials as to how uh, regulations could be framed. That would be, uh, as well, make matters more straightforward for people who have to seek planning permission where they find themselves in this situation. So, uh, we have played a part in that and are, are, are obviously willing and, and happy to play a further role in that as well. Um, I suppose I'll return then, I think, the final two points, and I hope, oh, sorry, no, there, there's one matter. Um, the, the, uh, the quarry that was raised in relation to the decision to grant, uh, uh, an extension to the term of, of, of a quarry, a specific quarry was referenced. Um, I, I don't have the, the, the detail of that available to me today. I'm happy to review it along with the senior planner and to bring the details back to, to, to council. No difficulty in doing that, but I don't have the details on that available today. Um, as well then, the final two questions were those posed by, by Councillor Gerry Crawford and, and was dealing with the second one first, which is in relation to when, when was the use of defective concrete products stopped? I'm, I'm not in a position to be definitive in that, in that regard, I, I just not in a position to, to, you know, to, to be defective in that regard. But I think the question you also asked was, can we be sure that houses currently being built? Um, are not, you know, that are, that they're not defective products going into those houses? And I suppose, this does br- bring us directly into the, the building regulations side of things. Um, and I suppose the Building Control Amendment Regulations now requires that the design and construction of buildings is verified during construction through the execution of an inspection plan overseen by a registered construction professional known as the Assigned Certifier. And that enables the builder and the Assigned Certifier to sign a statutory cer- certificate, certificate of compliance on completion. So the builder and the Assigned Certifier are responsible for ensuring that workmanship and materials which they select comply with the requirements of the buil- building regulations. And that all test certificates and confirmations are satisfactory. And that all test certificates and confirmations are satisfactory. And correlated to allow the for certification of compliance upon completion of the of the building. So that that is an important point, councillor Crawford, and that's the clarification on that one, as far as I'm aware. Kahir, I think that's uh all the matters that were uh that relevant to to the wider planning service and maybe I'll hand back to to John on that.
Yeah, thank you very much, Liam. And just I might ask, Michael McGarvey is going to talk to us about the issue about. The uh suppose as the construction and demolition waste arising, in the event you have to demolish the house or home and the outer leaf. And the options that might be available there in terms of if it has to go to a disposal site. Or the options to actually reshape your site, if you're getting planning to use it within, that's important as well. And so so or or uh but when it goes off the site, it makes it different. So if you use it on your site, there's certain advantages, but Michael might take us through that. And I know that was mentioned earlier by councillor Gary Doherty, but S P C chatting about that as well next week. Had over to Michael for a few minutes.
Thank you, John, and Chief Executive, and thank you, members and Kairla. And just like to again share the concerns that have been expressed by the Chief Executive and by Liam. And by all of the members here today. And we all shared and we all unfortunately know people, family members and friends who are. Exposed to this very traumatic and worrying um situation. So um just go on, and I won't repeat what's said, but I would share all of the sentiments that have been raised here. And we'd obviously like to, from our point of view, just try and help in whatever way we can as a team and as an executive. And work with yourselves as well and with the public and with others involved. Um just firstly, in terms of the waste material, I've discussed this with the Chair of the. Uh Climate Action Environment Strategic Policy Committee, we're meeting on Wednesday next. We've added this to the agenda. And we will be giving an update there and we'll be coming back to the Strategic Policy Committee and to the elected members. And what updates on this situation. Um basically, first of all, there are a number of um options for reuse of clean inert demolition material. And there's as the Chief Executive point there, where you're on a standalone site which can be re-profiled where planning is in place, that's an option there. Again, we're acceptance of material on another site and there's a process called certificate of. Uh registration and planning in place and can be accepted there again, that's clean inert material. However, there is definitely a need for large scale sites to be available for the acceptance of clean inert demolition material. Because we're talking very, very significant quantities here. Um and that's currently not available. There are options to be looked at and we will be exploring and are exploring these and considering these. There's basically whole, for example, even quarries where they came from that could be granted waste facility permits and licensing. We're looking at these regionally and with working groups nationally in terms of the overall construction and demolition issue. And obviously the MICA is just an addition to that. But what we want to look at as well, and we've raised this again, what um what our colleagues and what our regional support teams. Um that we want to look at, you know, going into the whole circular economy, if we are. There are issues with getting permits where to put such material. But we want to look at this as an opportunity for the whole circular economy. If we do put such material in the ground now and get a permit and etc, we certainly don't want to be going all over the country with it. We want these to be available in Donegal and for people and we will be working to get that clarified on the larger scale. But we also want that material possibly to be available going forward, wherever free deposit material. And we get clarification, what can be used for, that it could be actually um reused going forward in the whole circular economy. Um just that's something just that we, as I say, we have raised with our colleagues regionally and nationally, we're meeting with the department again on that. And we'll update the members going forward. So Chair, if that's okay on that one, I was just going to move on to one other issue, if that's okay. Um Chief Executive, maybe just to mention the the Aura Leisure Centre at this point.
Yeah, go ahead, Michael, and yeah, I would acknowledge there's a query as an example in the chat box, the way I've probably built it. This is one example, I suppose, who you might you might update as an aura.
Yeah, I'll give the update on the aura, just from the aura, um just to give an update on that, I know this is a issue that's been raised, was cracking. Um noticed there in early uh twenty twenty and was assessed um passively assessed. Uh by the management of the aura and by our structural engineer over a period. Now deteriorated to the point of further examination, what was deemed to be necessary, and that was carried out. Um and that's in the flum tower, which is where you might know where the water slates come down, it's a two story section there. And was a part of the blockwork when the assessment was carried, it was a part of the blockwork in and around the cracking was of poor structural quality. And was deemed not to be fit for purpose and presented potential risk. And um so following a structured and cost benefit analysis, a decision was made to remove all the blockwork and the outer leaf. And maybe I just pointed here first of all, that the structure is formed from a cavity wall. The inner wall is a reinforced sir um concrete structural shaft. And um with a rigid cavity insulation and an outer um one hundred millimeter block wall. And that's the wall we're talking to here, so it wasn't a structure supporting the tower in any way, there was no risk there. It was just the risk of the the blockwork becoming loose. And so we erected scaffolding, they examined it, made a decision to actually take it out and reconstruct that with new blockwork as a matter of urgency. And that is now being moved on and is substantially complete there. A further visually inspection of the exterior of the centre did not reveal. Any amendment in this issues of concern or particularly significant cracking. And again, however, we have um engaged an approved consultancy engineering firm. To conduct a full report on the blockwork and to advise the council appropriate actions going forward. And we'll just say there for the remainder of the building, and it's just worth pointing that out, that there's fair face blocks. Um is used internally in the main gym, for example. And the changing rooms are for a different source and um we believe, but we're going to again get this verified, there is no evidence of cracking. And we don't believe that they're from the same source and that isn't exposed to the same risk there. But again, we won't get all this tied down. Large parts, again, of the external facade is either glazed, that's in, you know, like the glass finish that you see there. Or concealed paneling and external insulation and not exposed to the prevailing weather conditions, the same weather conditions. There are some then external single story storage areas and another area somewhere um near the flum tower. And there is some visible cracking there and that will need, there is a potential for further deterioration, but it's not nearly to the extent of what we will be carrying out further tests and that. So that's what we stand at the moment, that um there is, and we will be back, there's uh questions raised there about, is it safe to use the centre? We believe it is safe to use the centre, we have actually assessed that. We are actually um have engaged external consulting engineers to do a full report, I think they're going to be in there um there be part of next week. But we will be coming back, but that's our position at the minute, otherwise we wouldn't have it open to the public and we wouldn't have been using it. If we didn't deem it to be fit, but we will be verifying that when questions are raised by ourselves and by others. It's only right that we actually take whatever steps that are taken to determine what steps need to be taken or different steps. So we'll um update the members as we, if more information comes available. Thank you, Kairla, and Chief Executive, I'm not sure if something else you wanted me to cover.
And that's it, that's it for now, Michael, yeah, yeah, and Kairla, I know some of that country, what I might suggest, and there's a number of questions we can't answer today. Uh and we will try and get answers to those in the coming period. And then others, we're not in a position to answer, but we'll see if some others can answer them or we'll tell that. I suggest to you, Kairla, we've prepared a chart of those, issued to members, but I suggest also we might just publish them on our website. Perhaps the following day with your permission, and we might do them blocks because there's so many questions there. And we'd also pick up, there's some questions going through in the chat box there from members who are on for the public. We'll pick those up as well, because the replies might be useful for everyone else to see as well. Okay, Kairla.
Thanks, nice response, John, particularly welcome that idea of putting the answers up on on the website, I guess that'd be great. And the entire purpose of today, as well as seeking clarity on so many issues, was uh demonstrate openness and transparency. That we tend to um exhibit from the council, so I think that's that's very, very much welcome. And there has been hundreds of questions, and so councillors, any councillors that have any question or anything they want to follow up on. And can send them on to me too, we can put them down in writing, and I think that's a great initiative that we will have them on our on our website. And I think everybody would welcome that. And there has, there's a few councillors have indicated, just to come back in, and councillor Frank Brady first, and councillor Michael McBride. And did any other members of staff or executive want to come in just before I open that again? And as I say, now, these these questions will come, and we will have a meeting again soon, we can follow up on on everything else too, so unless there's something that's been missed. And is that okay?
Probably the other director, not today, but they're involved, we're all with the management of the council, I think, and they'll assist with the answers, not today.
Okay, councillor Brady.
Well, th- thank you, um mayor, for for your patience. Um but first of all, I need to address uh what Director Joe Peoples has come up with. Um first of all, the council should not be doing remedial works on any council owned property. And I want the names of council engineers that are recommending that or private companies that have been brought in consultant engineers to do that recommendation. Secondly, the the uh the council is in breach of contract with the tenants. That is clear, that is the law on it. They're in breach of contract by not delivering a product that is safe for the tenants. And I'm now calling on the tenants to stop paying the rent and put their rent money into a post office account. Because that will protect them from the council going after them in the courts, where they can tell the judge, we've paid our money into a post office account. And until the council gives us the proper adequate property, they won't get the money until then. The next issue that I want to deal with is the issue of the emergency injunction that I have requested. Now, Liam Ward is, in my opinion, using the council solicitor, and I blame the council solicitor, I don't blame him. I don't blame Liam Ward for this. They never should have went to the district court for an injunction against Island Moor. Now, you have not stopped the activity in that development. That unauthorized development in an area of conserva conservation. And that is the reality here. If you had have got that injunction in the High Court, we wouldn't be talking about it now because the place would be closed up, because the High Court doesn't mess about. So I'm asking the question, why did our county solicitor recommend to go to the district court in the first place to get an injunction to stop? The development in Island Moor. Now, David Cassidy rang me personally, and I I put this on the record, so I did before. About me complaining on behalf of the residents in that area. He is continuing up until today, as far as I know, taking aggregate out of that development. Not directly out of the river, but the stocks that are down there, which have not been tested for using for aggregate. So I'm asking now the Chief Executive to deal with this issue personally now over your head, Liam, because the county solicitor. Obviously doesn't want to deal with it for whatever reason. Now, I want to touch on the point here that. Michael McGarvey has come up with. Now, the Aura Centre, I want to know what blocks have been used to rebuild the works that have been done in there, because there should not be remedial work. You're an engineer, Michael, you know your ethics, you know your oath you took when you became an engineer. And no engineer can sign off on remedial works, none whatsoever. And I want to know what engineer has been employed by the council that has signed off on those works, I want to know today. Not only that, I want to know if there has been any testing done to the concrete foundations of that building, which has been flooded a number of times. Which could be affected by MICA, pyrolate or pyrite. First of all, I'm a steel fixer and a very good one, so was. Many boys that worked along with me across the water will tell you. Pyrolate will eat in to the reinforcing used in concrete. It may take twenty, thirty years to do it, but it will do it because of sulfuric acid created in the pyrolate itself. Now, I want to know exactly what the reports are on the damage done during the floods in the Aura Centre. And I want to know them today. Now, this scandal is like the water contamination true stories in America, one recently done in a Hollywood movie. But this is in a far bigger scale what has been done to people's homes and properties. Anybody wants to watch what people do to cover up? Watch the Hollywood movie about the contamination of water in in towns and villages in the U S. Because this is exactly what has happened here, there's been a cover up at government level. Assisted by whoever, and I'm not making any allegations, but if the council doesn't want to give me answers on the issues that I've asked. They'll answer the questions in a public inquiry, because if I go into the public inquiry and cross examine like I did in the Garda Garda tribunal, the Morris tribunal. I won't have no mercy for nobody. And I'm telling you this now, you'll have to answer questions in the High Court, because we only have to, we only have to run one case to expose everything. Because there's going to be thousands of cases coming down the road, just like the army deathness cases where six thousand soldiers were compensated. So if people think that I'm messing about, they better wake up, because what has been said today has been far better. If I was your solicitor, I would have told you not to answer any questions, because the answers we've got today is pure and utter waffle. That's what it is, waffle, and I don't care if you're offended or not, it's waffle, pure waffle. If you were in a court of law or if you were in a tribunal of inquiry, you would answer the questions. But you are not answering the questions, and through the chair, I'm putting this to you, Chair, we need answers. And we 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 need to meet tomorrow again to get answers, then we should be meeting tomorrow. And members of this council should not be leaving this meeting, because this is the biggest public interest case that this country has ever seen. Donegal has suffered with corruption for many years, in particular the Donegal Garda corruption case that my family exposed. But this is a far higher level of corruption, far higher level. And everyone's entitled to the presumption of innocence and natural justice. But at some stage, everybody here in front of us will have to answer the questions. And the public will judge today the response of members, some of them, they will respond, they will respond. They will respond on Facebook and other social media outlets about, in my opinion, some of them rallying the wagons and circling the wagons for their government parties. And not only that, I'm I'm not, I'm fed up listening to this, I'd like to thank this person, I'd like to thank that person. Anybody that's working for Donegal County Council are getting well paid to do so, far more than I'm getting paid for sitting here. And I'm going to tell you this now, the bottom line here is, this this thinking, the the members thinking, this person and that person. I can't stand it anymore, I can't take it, I can't actually take this anymore, yous are getting well paid for doing your jobs. I don't thank anybody for doing their jobs, I thank you for your courtesy, but I don't thank you for doing your jobs. And the issue here is, the chairman of the MICA committee withheld information that was vital for me and every other member. Highlighting the failure of the council and engineers recommending remedial works. Now, a PhD means you're a doctor, Doctor Ambrose McCloskey is a doctor. The engineers that rec, the engineers that give recommendations to the expert panel are not PhDs, they don't have PhDs, and they're not experts. There's been no peer reviewed studies done on this issue of MICA, pyrite or pyrolate or any mineral that affects concrete products. And that's where the reality of this is, so no one can can recommend remedial works. And I heard, all I've heard from the executive, from from the the director of housing, all I've heard is remedial works. Well, I'm telling you something now, be prepared for legal action against you if you try to attempt to continue this carry on of remedial works. Because remedial works cannot be done with a house or a property that is owned by anybody. That has MICA, pyrite or pyrolate, especially a house with pyrolate when it melts and rusts the wall ties in that property. And I had, I had, for the thanks of John McGlaughlin, I have had the work stopped in St Johnston. Where tenants under hap are under severe risk that of the the inside of their houses falling down round them. While work is going on outside, because there's been no protection of them for them, those hap, those hap tenants in St Johnston. There's been no protection for them whatsoever, the weight bearing of the weight bearing part of the house that is that is that they're inside in. Has not been stayed by acros or any protection outside, the scaffolding alone is a joke. And what do you call, John McGlaughlin assured me that the house, the the Health and Safety Authority would be sent down there to look at the whole place. Because it's the responsibility of the council down in St Johnston, because they own the road, they own the footpath, and they own half the properties and the estate itself. But the answers we've got here today are pathetic, pathetic, they're absolutely pathetic, and I don't apologize for saying that, pathetic. And I'll tell you something now, yous better all waking up, because I'm only starting, I'm only starting to ask the hard questions. And I better get answers, or I'll get the answers in the High Court, or I'll get the answers in the tribunal. And I better get answers, or I'll get the answers in the High Court, or I'll get the answers in the tribunal of inquiry, one or the other. Take your pick and yous can bum your chairman of the, the, the MICA committee all you want. What he should do is resign from the Finafall party now and show people that he is serious. And then I'll take him serious then when he does do that. But I'm asking the final question here now. Cairn Brogan, mayor of this county in two thousand and sixteen, how many houses did use by of him that could possibly have MICA? I'm asking that question now. Tell me now, I've asked it behind the scenes, I'm now asking it publicly. Or any other member that is in association with contracting that sold properties to Donegal County Council, I'm asking that question now. And the members can block me all they want, but I'll get answers. I'll get answers either from the council or through a freedom of information request. So I probably said too much now, but I'm telling you something now, I'm only starting. And when I start fighting corruption and when I start fighting for justice for people, I don't stop to get the justice. So thank you, Chair, for accommodating me today, and thank you for, for allowing me to speak, and thank you for allowing me to ask the questions that need to be asked.
No problem. And we're fair to, Chief Executive was committed to answering every single question that was asked today in writing and people on the website, including the ones from the public as well, who have joined us here today. So we will see those answers, we can judge those answers, we'll be coming back in meetings. We've all agreed that this is the most important issue that we're ever going to do in this county. So if it takes another hundred meetings, I will facilitate another hundred meetings. But I think that in the meantime, the commitment from the Chief Executive is a good one. Answer every single question and make them available to the public. I think, I think we can't ask for much more than that at the moment.
Okay, Kierla. Okay, Kierla, can I ask a question just for clarification, please?
Yeah, go ahead. Michael McBride into, Chair, you know, go ahead.
It's just something that Joe Peoples, Joe Peoples' director service put a figure nine hundred houses. And up until now, we were informed that there was one three, one thousand three hundred social houses affected. Is, is Joe now after further inspections or testing saying nine hundred now? Guess we're going to have that clarified, please, for Joe.
Yes, Kierla, what I'm, what I'm saying at the moment is definitively, I think we can say it's in the high nine hundreds, nine hundred, near nine hundred and ninety. But I think the key point I was making was, we could only establish definitively, once we did, once we did testing and perhaps as well, councillor. With the passage of time, houses may deteriorate in areas where potentially we never expected that they would. So I think there was in the period that, in question here, between acquisitions and construction, I think the house, the council had nineteen hundred new houses under stock. So I suppose that's the scale of what we're dealing with in this particular period, but the uncertainty around whether an issue would emerge in relation to a particular estate or a particular house that might not be on our radar at the moment. Then I suppose that, that was, that might be something that might emerge into the future. So we cannot be definitive about that, but we're, we're quite certain of that first number I gave you. That it's standing around that nine hundred and eighty, nine hundred and ninety at the moment. That's, we're quite clear on that.
Okay, we've had a good time with this now, so let's some different, I've got to make a writing and councillor Martin Farren. You log into Tom, right?
Yeah, let's talk. So Michael McBride, Martin Farren and Tom Conlon.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. I'm just coming in to clarify something. For some reason or other, I'm not able to log into the chat box. And but I would just like to reply to a chat that was posted by Roshin Gallagher. And the post read, how can councillor Michael McBride suggest replacing the outside leaf, in complete contradiction to Doctor Ambrose McClosky, whose argument that this is wrong? And just, I haven't at any time recommended the replacement of outer leaf as a solution. As everyone that I have discussed MICA will testify to. And the inner leaf is the leaf in the house that carries the weight, the weight of the roof. And as far as I can ascertain from talking to people about the tests that are being done in houses that have MICA, that the inner block is probably roughly coming in around about five Newton. And I've always said that both, that what I would be recommending is that houses would be demolished. And when I mentioned about the outer leaf earlier on, I was merely giving an example that was given to me by a building contractor who has replaced outer leaves. That it was taking four people, three months to replace the outer leaf in a house. I do not subscribe to the replacement of the outer leaf myself. And I think I developed that point to say that it was going to take five hundred people, ten years, and that was only for, after replacing the outside leaf, that was an example that I give. So I want to make it clear, Roshin, and I do apologise to you and to everybody else that's online, if I didn't make myself absolutely clear. I've always said that I do not subscribe to the replacement of the outside leaf only. Because in my opinion, you're only putting a plaster over a problem when you replace the outside leaf. So, Roshin, look.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was, Roshin, Michael, she's just clarifying there, it wasn't Roshin. I know Roshin will, she's just clarifying, it wasn't her, it's said, I think it was her participant.
But I apologise, but anyway, that, 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 look, I, I just want to apologise, that's my, people, if I didn't make myself clear, that's all I'm trying to say here. And I for definite don't subscribe to just the replacement of the outside leaf and never have. So, thank you, Chairman, for giving me the time to clarify that. I think it's important and I, I just, I couldn't reply to it, I can't get on on the chat box, so thank you.
That's understanding. Councillor Martin Farren, Councillor Tom Conlon.
Just trying to get, thank you, Jack, I won't keep you too long. Just, Michael, just, we're having a meeting on Wednesday, I think next week, the SPC in terms of we're going to be opening the beginning of the meeting about identifying sites for the rubble and so on and so forth, and to look at that. But what I'm going to ask you to look at as you're doing that, and as your honour is a big talent, so it's very important that, you know, that when you identify these sites that are basically made accessible for people whenever they have to demolish their houses, I would be saying sites, for example, in North Sunnyside, South Sunnyside. You wouldn't want someone, say, for example, in my own area of my borough, having to travel away to, you know, miles and miles away to dispose of the, of the rubble. So I think when you're having your meeting, possibly next week, that you would be looking at that, the, the, you know, the geography of it. And to make it accessible for people whenever they have to demolish their house. To have to dig your house down is a big thing in itself, and I can imagine, you know, it's not just knocking down, you're knocking down a family home. So I just wanted to bring that point up. The other thing I just want to come on to me, would be good friend Frankie Brady there, and Frankie, I've been good friends over many, many years, living on the council together. And I think he's just gone really, and I mean this in the nicest possible way, Frank, overboard, we've been in relation to the chairman of our MICA committee. Because Martin is a very honourable person, very well respected, and in his own ear. And I would ask you maybe to withdraw the remarks in relation to him having to resign, as well, up to himself in terms of his party. But as chairman of our MICA committee, because I think the people spoke here today, and they're very supportive of Martin, as I am, he is my full hundred percent. As Albert has there as vice chairman, and as I say, I just think it's something that, you know, I don't think that it needs to be said here, because Martin, as I says, is a very honourable person. And I would, I would suggest that Martin should hold on to the position that he's in. And as I said in the outset, I would like to see him, if it was possible at all, and Albert, if it was possible at all, to join the committee that's already been selected to go and see the government. Because we, all the other councillors, I think I speak on behalf of all the other councillors, I don't think of any descending voices. I think we're very happy with Martin as chairman of our MICA committee. And that's just basically all I want to say. Thank you.
I don't intend that opening up to that again. I think that's, that's been done. We've taken that on, that Frank has made his opinions, all the councillors have made their opinions now.
Well, through, through, through the chair, through the chair, through, through the chair, through, through the chair, Jack, through the chair. Martin Farren has, has, has requested me to withdraw something. I warned councillor Martin McDermott on the telephone, when I'm fighting a legal war, I don't take prisoners. And he has, he has an option, he has an option, he has an option to step down from Finafall, and as a victim of MICA, he should do that. Because what do you call, the, the bottom line here is, the bottom line is here, Jack, right? That, that working group cannot deliver us justice, and I'm having nothing to do with them. They won't deliver us anything. They might deliver one or two things, but I hope I'm wrong. I hope they do deliver us justice, so we don't have to go down the legal route. But I don't, I, I, that working group does not work for me. And not only that, councillor McDermott, I told him, I says, when the war is over, we'll still be friends. And I'm making no assertion that he's not a decent person, but what I'm saying is, he's trying to protect his party at national level. And I stand over everything I said to him on the telephone. I have good time for him, I think he's a nice fella, but you can't be nice when you fight the state, you have got to be nasty as they are.
Right. That, that's an issue clearly, we're not, we're not, everybody's had their say in it tonight. It's, it's over now. We can disagree on that. We're going to move on. Councillor Tom Conlon.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make a comment or two there, and maybe within my rights, maybe I'm not, but the whole fact I would like to say now, I'm, I'm sitting here and, and, and listening to a lot that's going on, it sounded very good upstairs, but it just seems to be getting like last week. Now, the, the, the one thing that I would like to say, I don't think anybody has to sit for five hours and listen to what we're listening to. Now, I would also go first to say that I feel sorry for you as chairman to, to have to take what you got, although really Donnybrook the last day. Now, in my opinion, if anybody has anything to say about anybody, it's not on the air or openly like this. Cairn Brogan, in my opinion, and Michael McDermott, I've been taken under question all the time. Now, I think it's not a one bit fair for people that have so much to offer, and I would go first to say that I would not be prepared to stand for all this, carry on this going on here and there at the moment. And the other thing is, I would feel strongly that this, I have only been my second term, that this is the best council that ever has been. And let anybody not think that it's going to be pulled down by anybody else, because I think, you know, we came here the day to discuss something about MICA. And I think there was as much linen washed as ten washing machines wouldn't clean it up. Thank you very much, Chairman. I think nobody deserves what's going on.
Well, Chair, I can't help it, it's Tom Conlon. I can't help it, Chair, if Tom Conlon can't stand up and fight, I can show you how to fight. I can show you how to fight. Go and read the Morris tribunal, what I've done to the state. I'll, I'll dry out all of the linen I have to, and you won't stop me, councillor Conlon. And, and you can take that, you can take that to the bank, you can take that to the bank that caused all the problems in this country.
It's all with anybody here right now. I think you're standing to wrap it up. I'm, I'm, I'm going to wrap it up there, folks. We've put all our questions forward. We've got a couple from the executive to answer all those questions, make the questions public.
I can go all night, Tom Conlon, I can go all night. That's one thing that was good, it was a brilliant athlete, I can go all night, I can go on a meeting all night.
Frank, take a break. Have you known me here only yourself, have you heard?
Folks, I think this is a very worthwhile meeting. I think it was great to see the amount of people that were trained in here. I think it was great the contributions that every member made here today, united on this hugely important issue. It's reiterated, it's an important issue, an important meeting, it's important we all came together and we'll go back to do this again. So I want to thank everybody for their time. As Thomas said, it was five hours, people are very, very busy. It's a long and tiring process to do this, but it's massively important. And for all the people that were listening, they need to hear that we're standing up for this issue and we'll continue to do it. Only the, the executive and the chairs of the SPCs, myself, as the corporate policy group, are going to meet with the RAC members of the county. This, of course, will be an issue we will discuss in detail with them, and they'll again be united on us, with us on this issue. It's not going to go away, folks, we're going to keep working on it. So I just want to thank everybody for the positive contributions that were made today. And I think of that, I can bring it to a close.
Thank you, Chair.
My, my folks.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Kierla. Thank you.